We are live.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise as you're able and join me in the walking of the city council, the playing the national anthem, and the reading of the invocation.
Would you please remain standing as you're able as I read the invocation to begin the November City Council meeting? As we come together today, we recognize the great responsibilities are laid upon us. Our council will always strive to understand the needs of the people we serve and to use power wisely and well. Our purpose is to establish and maintain a city of prosperity and righteousness, where freedom prevails and where justice rules. We acknowledge the rich history of this land, which includes the Anishinaabe and Haudenosaunee peoples. Together, there are, today there are many First Nations, Mity and Inuit peoples who live and work in our city. The intent of this acknowledgement is to recognize our responsibility to use and take care of these lands respectfully and responsibly while remembering generations past and considering generations yet to come. We respect and seek to continue and promote the longstanding relationships with the area's First Nations, the Six Nations of the Grand River, and the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, and all the indigenous peoples who reside within the city of Branford. We must also not forget those who've served our community and who are no longer with us so that we can continue to do the work that we must in their memory. Please proceed. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councillor Van Thoeborg. Here. Councillor Carpenter.
Here.
Councillor Sluss.
Present.
Councillor McCreary.
Here.
Councillor Sullivan.
Present.
Councillor Samuel.
Here.
Councillor Hunt. Councillor Martin.
Here.
Councillor Caputo.
Present.
Councillor Sikoli.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Present.
Through the chair, roll call has been taken.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. So, does anybody have a pecuniary interest in each declare regarding any of the items that are on tonight's agenda? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no raised hands, we'll go now move to the separation of items. We do have 12.4.7, the Deputy Mayor for External Relations appointment as Councillor McCreary and Councillor Carpenter would like to make some amendments. Are there any other items contained in the committee reports the council wishes to be separated? Yes, Councillor Carpenter.
Mr. Mayor, on your conflict interest, last time it made whole, I brought forward a conflict interest on the issue with the Branford-Brant Norfolk Health Team, whatever one that one is, it carries forward. I'm on that committee.
Okay, so you want appointments dealt separately? Is that what you're saying?
I think it was funding.
Funding, okay. Mr. Clerk, I don't think we have it on here. I think it might be 12.4.4. Okay, well, we'll deal with it separately.
12.4.4, yeah.
Yeah, if you could just describe the nature of the conflict again, please.
Yes, the conflict is that I serve as a member of the Branford-Brant Norfolk Health Team.
Yes, I recall that now. All right. Anything else? Seeing nothing else? Mr. Clerk, if you would please, first of all, if I can get a mover and second to approve the items that have not been separated, moved by Councillor Sullivan, seconded by Councillor McCreary. Clerk, if you please read the title of the items we're about to vote on.
Through the chair, the following items are subject to the vote. So from the Committee of the Whole Operations Report, 1211 Northwest Municipal Service Expansion Environmental Assessment Preferred Alternatives, 1212 Proposed License Agreement, 1213 Volunteer Branford Policy, 1214 Highway 43 Emergency Detour Route Review, 1215 Right-of-Way Policy Review from the Social Services Committee Report, 1221 Business Plan 389 West Street, 1222 Updates to Ontario Works Social Assistance Service Delivery from the Appointments Committee Report, 1231 Appointment of Members of Council to the Areas Committees, Boards, Advisor Committees, and Task Forces, 1232 2024-2025 Council Tenants Report, 1233 Appointment of Citizen Members to the Areas Committees from the Committee of the Whole Planning Administration Report, 1241 Code of Conduct filing fee slash closed meeting protocol, 1242 Vanillaism Prevention Restoration rebate program, 1243 Grayfield CIP Tax Incomitment Grant Application for 395 Park Road North, 1245 2026 Candidate Education Session, 1246 City-funded Food Programs Additional Requested Information, 1248 Downtown Branford Prior Plan Annual Update, 1249 Accessible Parking, 12410 Financial Support for Lansdowne Children's Center New Bill, 12411 Professional Activity Day on Municipal Election, 12412 Grown Community Resilience Vertical Farming for Food Security from the Planning Committee Report, 1251 Zoning Bylaw Amendment, NPS Ed. 1425 106 Paris Road, 1252 Extension to an Approved Draft Plan of Subdivision, Pages 2 and 3, Shutter Lane from the Estimates Committee Report, 1261 2026 Shared Social Services Budget Approval. All items not separated for discussion purposes carries unanimously on a recorded vote of 11 to 0. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Councillors Sullivan, Sluss, McCreary, Hunt, Van Thoeborg, Samuel, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, Mayor Davis.
All right, we have no statutory public hearings on this evening's agenda, but we do have a recognition of achievement. And so I'm going to come down and we have a recognition we'd like to make, so I'll be right down. Okay, we've got everybody up? Yeah, yee-haw. Okay, well, first of all, let me say what I want to say. Because there is something I do want to say. So this evening is my great privilege to recognize the Stomp-tastic Line Dance Team, whose remarkable international achievement has brought pride, celebration, and a powerful sense of community accomplishment to our city. Stomp-tastic was awarded the overall dance team grand champion title at the inaugural World Dance Showdown in Indianapolis, Indiana. This outstanding victory represents the culmination of years of hard work by many of you and together, I think over the last year, disciplined and unanswering commitment from a team of seventeen local team dancers, and I counted you, I think you're all here tonight, who exemplify the best of our community's spirit and talent. Competing against some of the top performers from across North America, Stomp-tastic delivered an exceptional performance that earned them impressive results, including, count them, four gold medals, one silver medal, and four major choreography awards. That's worth a little bit of celebration. So what makes this achievement even more extraordinary is that for most of the team, your first ever competition. And despite being relatively unknown when you arrived in Indianapolis, Indiana, your talent, your teamwork, and enthusiasm quickly established a mark at this competition and the admiration of other members of the audience and fellow competitors alike. You look very proud and you should be proud. So on behalf of the city of Branford, it's my great pleasure and honor to commend and congratulate the Stomp-tastic Line Dance Team for their international victory. Please join me in celebrating their remarkable achievement and the pride they brought to our community. You got that hoedown spirit. And having grown up in Calgary, I can really appreciate that hoedown spirit. So Joan, as I take it you're the leader of this fine group, so did you want to say a few words? I didn't think there was any doubt of that. I'm gonna, okay, here you go.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the mayor and council and everyone for representing us tonight and recognizing us. So on behalf of everyone, in the words of the man himself, ready? Thank you, thank you very much. And I want to congratulate our seventeen plus one dancers. Keith was not able to go with us due to some health reasons, but there were eighteen people who started rehearsing a year ago and we went in as in obscurity and we came out as celebrities. And we are just so honored that Branford Line Dancing is now known all over. And thank you for that, thank you. A minor one, but thank you.
Yeah, it certainly is.
So I do have. Thank you, Joan. So I do have one certificate. I'm not sure are you going to share that with all seventeen, but we can always have it, you know, put in a plaque and a source of pride and inspiration to this team and other teams that'll follow you. So Joan, would you accept this on behalf of your team? Okay. Well, hang on, we're gonna, we're gonna take a little break, a short break, so that members of council can come down and congratulate each of you individually. So let's call a little break so we can all recognize, come down and recognize you for what you accomplished. That'll speed things up. Well, on that very uplifting start, we'll now move into our more mundane business. So we're gonna move into proclamations. We only have one this month, and I believe, Councillor Sikoli, you've got that motion?
I do move by myself, seconded by Councillor Sullivan, but the following proclamations be approved. 8.1 Christian Heritage Monday, December 2025. And then I believe I also, oh, it's month.
Go ahead.
I think that's a typo. So whereas the Confederation of Canada, which was originally named the Dominion of Canada, a name that was inspired by Psalms 72:8 of the King James Bible, which states, "He shall have domain, dominion, also from sea to sea, and from the river unto the ends of the earth; and whereas the month of December marks significant events and celebrations in the Christian calendar, from the beginning of Advent to the celebration of Jesus Christ; and whereas, according to the 2021 consensus statistics, Canada Christianity is the largest religion in Canada, with a 53.3% of the population identifying as Christians; and whereas Christian Heritage Month provides an opportunity for Canadians of all backgrounds to appreciate and celebrate the positive impact of Christianity on our shared history; and whereas December is associated with the tradition of gift-giving, gathering of family and friends, and celebrating all faiths; now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the City of Branford hereby proclaims December as Christian Heritage Month in the city of Branford."
So just one this month, I'll now call the vote.
With the approval of all proclamations, carries unanimously on a recorded vote of 11 to 0. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Councillors Sullivan, Sluss, McCreary, Hunt, Van Thoeborg, Samuel, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, Mayor Davis.
All right, so we have no presentations or delegations. So we'll move to the clerks' reported communications. Councillor Martin, I think you've got that resolution.
Yeah, I don't see it here. Ah, here we go. I'm moved seconded by Councillor McCreary that the clerks' reports on communication for November 2025 be received.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the votes.
The clerks' report on communication carries unanimously on a recorded vote of 11 to 0. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Councillors Sullivan, Sluss, McCreary, Hunt, Van Thoeborg, Samuel, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, Mayor Davis.
Councillor Samuel, I believe you have the motion regarding minutes.
Yep, moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Van Thoeborg that the following minutes be adopted. 11.1 City Council, October 28, 2025. That the following minutes be received. 11.2 John Noble Home Committee of Management, June 11, 2025. 11.3 John Noble Home Committee of Management Private and Confidential, June 11, 2025. 11.4 John Noble Home Committee of Management, July 9, 2025. 11.5 John Noble Home Committee of Management, September 10, 2025. And 11.6 John Noble Home Committee of Management Private and Confidential, September 10, 2025.
Any discussion, errors, and omissions, or referral on John Noble Home? Seeing none, call the vote.
The adoption of the minutes carries unanimously on a recorded vote of 11 to 0. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Councillors Sullivan, Sluss, McCreary, Hunt, Van Thoeborg, Samuel, Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, Mayor Davis.
All right, we'll move to committee reports. Councillor Sluss, I think that's your resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's moved by myself, seconded by my wardmate, Councillor Caputo, that all items in the committee reports, items 12.1 to 12.6, separated for discussion purposes, be approved.
All right, so we'll take them in numerical order. I think the first one would be 12.4.4, that's the Primary Care Access Pilot Program, Carpenter Con. Yes, Carpenter, Councillor Carpenter, you've got a conflict in that one. So any discussion on that one? Call the vote.
Item 12.4.4 carries unanimously on a recorded 10 to 0. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Councillors Sullivan, Sluss, McCreary, Hunt, Van Thoeborg, Samuel, Martin, Caputo, Sikoli, Mayor Davis.
All right, that leaves one item to be left with, which is 12.47, the Deputy Mayor for External Relations Appointment. We have, I believe, a request for two amendments. First, Councillor McCreary, and secondly, Councillor Carpenter. Does anybody want to say anything before I move into that? No? Councillor McCreary, you're first.
I'm here, thank you very much. Let me say first of all that Councillor Martin is the seconder for this amendment, and I'm just waiting to see it on the screen. And the amendment is, the council waived solicitor-client privilege in relation to the report entitled "Legal Analysis Reappointment of Deputy Mayor for External Relations, dated November 18, 2025."
Any discussion? Seeing none, call the vote.
The amendment carries on a recorded vote of 9 to 2. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Councillors Van Thoeborg, Samuel, McCreary, Martin, Sluss, Caputo, Sullivan, Sikoli, Mayor Davis. Members opposed, Councillor Carpenter and Hunt.
So members, as you know, that means that anybody can refer to anything that's in that opinion that we received from the city solicitor. So I'll now move on to Councillor Carpenter. I understand you have some kind of amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure you, uh, thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by my wardmate, Councillor, and the hunt, the staff be directed provide a report to the December meeting cycle outlining the process for amending council's composition to include an elected deputy mayor position effective for 2026 municipal election, and the report include the following. A draft by law establishing the elected deputy mayor position, a summary of legislative obligations, and required public notice processes, financial and administrative implications, including remuneration options, and a full implementation, online ensuring readiness for the opening of the 2026 nomination period.
Councillor Carpenter, I'm gonna rule that out of order. That goes far beyond the scope of the original resolution, which, as I understand, the resolution worded by Councillor Hunt was in reference to a review of my decision to appoint Councillor Sikoli as Deputy Mayor for External Relations. And it did involve a scan of other municipalities to put my decision in that context. So just something as extensive as this should be done by way of the notice of motion and not two minutes' notice to your council, fellow council members. So I'm gonna rule that of order.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I know you've given your explanation, but the timing is of the essence. We are talking about deputy mayors, and I disagree with that and I challenge the ruling of the chair.
All right, do you have a second?
Seconder, for challenging the rule, Councillor Hunt.
Okay, no debate, goes to vote. So if your vote is yes, the yes means you support the ruling of the chair. No means you support the challenge.
The decision this chair has been sustained on recorded vote of 8 to 3. Members of council voting in favor are as follows. Councillors Van Thoeborg, Samuel, McCreary, Martin, Sluss, Caputo, Sikoli, Mayor Davis. Members opposed, Councillors Sullivan, Carpenter, and Hunt.
All right, so any discussion? On the resolution as amended? Not seeing anything? Okay, oh, sorry, Councillor Hunt.
So I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but literally as we arrived, we received an amended mayoral decision. Is that appropriate to discuss?
That's correct.
Okay, so through you two staff, the section that is cited, 226 of the Municipal Act, the section B of the amended mayoral decision says, "Whereas the mayor has the sole discretion at common to delegate council members his duties that are ceremonial or representative in nature..." And I just brought up section 226 of the Municipal Act, which says, "Substitution. A municipality may, with the consent of the head of council, appoint a member of council to act in the place of the head of council and anybody other than the council and other municipality, of which the head of council is a member by virtue of being head of council." So I'm, I guess the question to the clerk is, section or item B, whereas the mayor has the sole discretion, under what section of the Municipal Act would that be?
I'm gonna refer that to the city solicitor. In fact, I believe it was addressed in the city solicitor's memorandum, and it really is in the nature of the legal... And it really is in the nature of a legal issue, but solicitor client privilege is not waived. And I believe this committee has said to the solicitor, city solicitor, you can answer the question.
Michael Turno, Legal Services, to clarify, we've not seen the amendment. Is it referring to section two twenty six or section two twenty six point one?
Point one.
Section two twenty six point one would deal with the head of council as chief executive officer, whereas two twenty six is the substitution section. So I don't know if the question
Perhaps you can give us an explanation. I believe that's the question. What does substitute on what for what?
Section two twenty six through the mayor provides that council may, with the consent of the head of council, being the mayor, act, appoint someone to act as a substitute for the mayor on another body that by law the mayor would be entitled to sit on. So that would be in the nature of an elected board or some other entity.
So example would be the Police Services Board, Grand Bridge Energy, that sort of thing.
Potentially the Police Services Board. There is separate legislation that deals with the Police Services Board. So in some cases, you have to take that into account. But in general, yes, it'd be a legislated board or other entity.
Would the OBCM be a board?
Likely.
Point of order.
Yes. Yes, Counselor Carpenter.
This may, I thought my wardmate had the floor. How did that, how did she lose the floor? The questions go to you.
Just helping to clarify the question that the Counselor Hunt asked, but I'm quite happy to turn it over back to Counselor Hunt because her speaking time still continues.
Thank you. And so again, my question, I guess to legal is, and I don't know, do you have the revised mayoral decision?
Through the mayor, no, we don't have the revised version.
Okay, so that might have been something that legal might have wanted to have in advance of this question. So item B says, whereas the mayor has the sole discretion at common to delegate council members his duties that are ceremonial or representative in nature. And the section of the Municipal Act that is cited is again, two twenty six point one, but two twenty six says the municipality may, with the consent of the head of council, appoint a member to council to act in the place of the head of council. So I'm trying to determine here under the Municipal Act, is this section relevant?
Through the mayor. If it was two twenty six, quite correct, that is, the municipality in an action of council. Two twenty six point one clarifies the powers of the mayor as the head of council. And those that covers certain of the head of council duties.
So I'm reading two twenty six point one, and nowhere does it say that the mayor has the sole discretion to delegate council members. I mean.
Speaking time's up. Do you want me to put down for a second time?
Sure.
Counselor Van Toborg.
Yeah, I just think we need to get down to the brass tacks real quick, and these questions generally are pretty darn easy to answer. If you were to ask whether the mayor has the ability to replace the CAO, we would quickly get an answer that it would be yes. The fact of the matter is, the mayor does not unilaterally have the ability to appoint a deputy mayor. The mayor can suggest a deputy mayor on the section just brought forward, and then council can vote to approve that selection for a deputy mayor. The memorandum that changes the November eighth decision, and what was brought into question was the mayor's authority to implement that decision in itself is invalid because that mayor did not have those powers. The mayor has corrected it to the proper legislation that it belongs to, and in that legislation, it puts it back to the hands of council. So at this point in time, in order to fulfill what the mayor has requested is, it still needs to be brought forward to council for a vote, which is what the whole impetus of Counselor Hunt's resolution meant from the get-go. So I hope that at some point in time, we can get there so that we can have the mayor's choice put before us, and we can vote on it and move on.
Any other speakers? Counselor Sles.
We keep going around and around and around. I'd just like to ask a simple question. Did the mayor have the authority to do what he did?
Through the mayor, our analysis is that the mayor's decision, from a corporate perspective, is defensible in that there's various sections of the Municipal Act that, taken as a whole, would permit the appointment of a delegate as the deputy mayor for external relations to carry out the functions in that appointment, which was the original appointment that we reviewed in August. We've not seen revised appointment.
Could you give me a yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, he had the authority to do what he did, or he didn't?
Based on the, for the August appointment, yes.
So the answer was?
It's, yes, the authority existed. The position of the municipality in doing this is defensible. That's
So in a yes-no answer, the answer is yes. He had the authority.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, let's go, vote. Oh, Counselor Carpenter.
Yeah, I'm not convinced. So what I think I'll do as an individual is just refer this matter to the ombudsman and ask the ombudsman's point of view on this matter.
Okay, I'm going to call the vote. Yep, call the vote. Anybody else want, am I cutting anybody off? Counselor Carpenter says he's going to go to the ombudsman, so. Okay. Call the vote. Yeah, I think we better clarify, Mr. Clerk, what we're voting on.
Through the chair, counselor moved an amendment to waive privilege that was carried. And the discussion was on the motion as amended, which is what you're voting on now.
Which is?
Which includes the original recommendation with council waiving privilege.
And also includes a request of me, I believe. Correct.
Alright, I'll read the original resolution. That report, Deputy Mayor for External Relations, I could put on the screen actually.
It was to receive the report, and then there was an amendment, a cow that was approved by cow, which was a request to me, I think. There we go, I think that's it. Okay, so we're going to put that to the vote now that we have it in front of us. Yeah, I think some members are saying that they okay. Yeah, I think perhaps there's a bit of confusion, I think so. So perhaps it's clerks, so that everybody understands what yes or no means, if you would please read the resolution. Thank you.
Through the chair, I'll share the resolution again. Let me just cancel this vote. The resolution that council is voting on is will be shared on the screen. It will also include another clause waiving privilege.
Can I call for a separate vote? Is it too late?
Okay, well, let's get it up in front of us, if we can, please. So it's we keep losing it now. So the report be received. B, that council requests me to terminate the appointment. C, that should I deem assistance filled with duties? I think that's saying use bylaw one sixty three, twenty twenty two. And D, that would be mayor of the month ceremonial duties, which and that he bring a request back to council for consideration. I think that's tied into C. So separate vote? Let's take them one at a time.
Through the chair, there's also going to be clause E, which is waiving privilege.
Correct. Yes. If you have it in front of us, so we're crystal clear what we're doing. First would be the receiving the report, I think.
Clause A carries unanimously and recorded vote of eleven to zero.
Can we can you include the text of B?
I can, it might just take some time.
Okay.
Would you like me to include the text of B?
Well, just so that we're absolutely
Okay, one second. Clause B carries on recorded vote of seven to four. Members of council vote in favor are swallows. Councillors Sullivan, McCurry, Hunt, Van Toborg, Samuel Carpenter, Martin. Members opposed, Councillors Sles, Caputo, Sakoli, Mayor Davis.
Yep, C up?
Point of clarification, C and it got separated here.
I think they're together, though.
C and D are actually the same.
Yeah. I think you're right. Okay.
And that carries on recorded vote of seven to four. Members of council vote in favor, Councillors Sullivan, Martin McCurry, Carpenter, Hunt, Samuel Van Toborg. Members opposed, Sles, Caputo, Sakoli, Mayor Davis.
We have D now?
Yep.
I think there's Z two as well.
There is D and E up there. Clause D carries on recorded vote of eight to three. Members of council vote in favor, Councillors Sullivan, Sles, McCurry, Hunt, Van Toborg, Samuel Carpenter, Martin. Members opposed, Councillors Caputo, Sakoli, Mayor Davis.
Question, clarification?
I'm here, thank you. I wonder if staff might indicate how they will convey the legal analysis document. Will it be appended to the minutes of tonight's meeting as part of it?
I think that's what makes the most sense.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep. Everybody's nodding, so I think that's what yes means, that it would be released. Yep, okay.
Clause E is carried on recorded vote of nine to two. Members of council vote in favor, Councillors Sakoli, Sullivan, Caputo, Sles, Martin, McCurry, Samuel, Van Toborg, Mayor Davis. Members opposed, Counselor Hunt and Carpenter.
Okay, so let's move on to we have no urgent reports, there's no resolutions. We've got one notice of motion. Counselor Caputo, if you please read the title of your notice of motion.
Amendment to the noise bylaw.
Nice and simple. Alright, so moving into bylaws. Counselor Sullivan, you have the motion to approve bylaws not separated. Please read that. Let's take your second.
Well, we'll do. Obviously moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Sakoli. Just waiting for them to come up. Bylaw one oh one, twenty twenty five, a bylaw to amend. Bylaw seventy, twenty ten, being a bylaw to adopt various city of Branford policies by adding corporate policy zero five seven, volunteer Branford policy twenty twenty five, five oh seven, committee of the whole operations report. Bylaw one oh two, twenty twenty five, being a bylaw to appoint members of council to various committees, boards, advisory committees, and task force. Bylaw one oh three, twenty twenty five, being a bylaw to appoint citizens to various committees and task force. Bylaw one oh four, twenty twenty five, a bylaw to amend. Bylaw seventy, twenty ten, being a bylaw to adopt various city of Branford policies by adding council policy zero zero five, closed meeting protocol policy. Bylaw one oh five, twenty twenty five, a bylaw to amend bylaw number one twenty four, twenty twenty four. The comprehensive zoning bylaw for the city of Branford, being a bylaw to regulate the use of lands and the location erecting and using, use of buildings and structures in the city of Branford. Bylaw one oh six, twenty twenty five, a bylaw to amend. Bylaw one forty four, eighty eight, being a bylaw to regulate parking in the city of Branford. Bylaw one oh seven, twenty twenty five, a bylaw to amend. Bylaw thirty seven, eighty three, being a bylaw to regulate traffic in the city of Branford, speed regulations. Bylaw one oh eight, twenty twenty five, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation City of Branford with respect to the meeting held on November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Any separation for discussion? Seeing none, call the vote.
The approval of all bylaws carries unanimously and recorded vote of eleven to zero. Members of council voting favor are swallows. Councillors Sullivan, Sles, McCurry, Hunt, Van Toborg, Samuel Carpenter, Martin, Caputo, Sakoli, Mayor Davis.
Alright, so while the clerk and I are signing bylaws, we'll go to ward announcements, and I'll start with Counselor Sakoli.
I don't know if I have any ward announcements, but I will just recognize that today is the International Day for the elimination of violence against women, and it kicks off sixteen days of activism against intimate partner and gender-based violence. So we had a fight raising today. And I will just remind everybody, if you are experiencing intimate partner or gender-based violence, that there are resources for you in the community. And those resources can be found by accessing resources can be found by accessing Novavida. Thank you.
Councillor Kaputo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just an update, December the 5th, be the lighting of the lights, Branford Lights and Vibrant Palette will be at the Glenhurst, 7 p.m. Friday evening. And also Branford Station will be having their breakfast with Santa on November 30th from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. at the Polish Hollow on Pearl Street in support of the food bank. And Santa Claus Parade this Saturday afternoon in Michigan and Ohio State, Saturday afternoon. Go Blue!
Councillor Sles.
Nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just give everybody a sneak peek. Councillor Samuel and myself will be hosting the Holiday Christmas Gate on December 21st next month at 1 o'clock. So stay tuned for more details.
Councillor McCurry.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, if you live on modest stone court, you're getting new streetlights. We're supposed to start this month. There are parking changes coming to St. George Street in the vicinity of the commercial district. Those of you who are upset with the progress or lack thereof with respect to the Wayne Gretzky 403 interchange, we would just like to remind you, it's not our fault. It's a provincial piece of work and not a city of Branford. So you might want to direct your inquiries to MOT. Grant Community Foundation grant application period is in process now. You have until December the 10th to make your application for a grant for the coming outtake. And I was reminded today that today marks the one month period leading to Christmas Day. And that's my announcement, Smear. Thank you.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time I checked, my November fundraiser, I was at $3,940, leaving me just $60 short of my goal. So the next donation might be the one that puts me over my goal.
Councillor Samuel.
Thank you. I know Councillor Kaputo mentioned it as well, but I just wanted to say that I look forward to seeing everybody at the Santa Claus Parade. And at the after-party, the parade starts at 2 o'clock. I also wanted to mention the Battle of the Badges, Police and Fire. It's going to be an exciting hockey game at 3:30 at the Civic Center. And also the Eastward Echo Place Neighborhood Association is having their fourth annual handmade Christmas market, and that is this Saturday as well, 10 to 4 p.m. at Woodman Community Center. And then the BIA is actually, the Downtown BIA is hosting a Santa's Great Gift giveaway, and that's going to be on December 6th, and that'll be at Harmony Square from 3:30 to 6:30. And Downtown Central is excited to be hosting a Winter Fun Fair December 15th from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. at Central Public School. Thank you.
Councillor Van Toghburg.
We're good here.
Councillor Hunt.
Uh, thank you. So a couple of things. This coming Thursday, Free Sport for Growth has a neighborhood meeting that's being hosted at King Door School at 6:30, and that's regarding their project happening at Conklin Park. Foxridge Community Center, or sorry, the Foxridge Community Neighborhood Meeting is happening on December 11th, 6 p.m. at Foxridge, or anyone that's interested in finding out about this project. The December the 3rd is International Day of Persons with Disabilities, so just want to recognize that. And that's it for me.
Councillor Carpenter. All right, that's the November City Council meeting.